Thank you. Okay, so thank you very much. It's September the ninth and I want to welcome everyone to our council meeting. We enjoyed a little bit of a liquid sunshine this morning and with any luck we'll enjoy some sunshine sunshine. Later today. Okay, so I want to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, Council. We have all members of Gray County Council in attendance for this meeting.
Thank you very much. Item number three is our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality and culture of the Ania Shinnibet, the Six Nations of the Grand River, the Howden Ashani, and the Wendat, Wyandot, Wyandot peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors shot sign treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Metis and Inuit whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all as treaty people live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples. Okay, item number four, is there any declaration of interests, community or otherwise? Seeing none, we will proceed, but I would ask if one does come up during the course of the meeting that you declare it at that time. Item number five, adoption of minutes, five A is adoption of the county council and committee of the whole minutes dated August the 12th. It is moved by Counselor O'Leary and seconded by Counselor Woodbury. Any, any debate? If not, then I will call the question. Is there anyone opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. Next is the Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting Minutes dated August 12th. That is moved by Counselor Woodbury and seconded by Counselor Body. There's any debate on that, we would need to go back into closed session. So perhaps I will call the question, is there anyone opposed? And seeing none, that too is carried. Five C is the Long Term Care Development Planning Task Force Minutes dated August 5th, 2021. It is moved by Counselor Burley and seconded by Counselor Robinson. Any discussion on that item? And see, oh, yes, go ahead. Deputy Board McQueen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. There's a point in there I was just wanting to raise that was discussed. And it was the part around the discussion around Gray Gables with regards to the building, with regards to the report that says here, staff noted that based on phase one results from the S H S Salter Pylon, it was recommended to take a broad view on what the community needs on community, sorry, community needs on based on community input. It also says, Mr. Switzer noted that phase two of the report from S H S Salter Pylon on Gray Gables will be received shortly and the results will be shared at a future committee meeting. I guess my question here is, is do we know when that report will be coming forward?
I don't know who I'm turning to.
Randy.
Not Randy?
Yeah.
Thank you for that, that question. We anticipated receiving that draft by the end of August. We haven't received that yet from S H S, so we, we hope to receive that in the very near future. Once, once reviewed, we'll then obviously bring that forward to the redevelopment, long-term care redevelopment committee for, for review and comments. So we're hoping that will be probably later in, later in September, that report.
Okay, thank you for that information and thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, then I will call the question. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that too is carried. Item five D is the Committee of the Whole Closed, oh, excuse me. Five B, Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting Minutes dated August 12th.
No, five D.
Five D, yeah, I'm reading B, my apologies. Special Committee of the Whole Minutes dated August 26, 2021. That is moved by Counselor Columbus and seconded by Counselor Milne. Counselor Soever.
Yes, I'm, I'm kind of disappointed in the minutes in that the whole reason for the, the special meeting was to have the number of $400,000 per bed confirmed. And there's no mention of the $400,000 number here. I mean, there's some, you know, there's a lot of verbiage about, you know, the various things that were discussed in a very vague terms, but you know, I think, you know, the $400,000 number was the number that was asked about at the previous meeting. The consultant was brought in and did acknowledge that that was what they were there for, was to, to provide us with that information on which we were making a very serious decision. And, you know, I just find it, you know, a little strange that the minutes don't say that that was what was discussed was, you know, and confirmed to us because I reviewed the video of the meeting and certainly there, it was confirmed to us that the 400,000 was a number that we could rely upon in making our decision and that even though the land was, you know, we don't have any land costs or development charges and the site is fully serviced, but the consultant did confirm that they were aware that of other projects in similar circumstances that came in at that number. And, and those are very significant matters that we were confirmed to us because, you know, we, we did rely on that number or some of us did in making a decision to defer this project and, you know, I think it's important that that be reflected in the minutes. So I would like to move an amendment that the minutes reflect that that $400,000 number was confirmed to us in making our decision.
Okay, Madam Clerk, come in your hands.
You will need a second or first, sir.
Do we have a second or for that?
I'll second it.
I have Deputy Board McQueen, thank you. Okay, discussion.
So now I will just note that the minutes of council meetings are to be without note or comment and a committee of the whole. So that's how the minutes were drafted. There is a information in there generally speaking about the discussion, but they are to be without note or comment. I'm leaving it up to, to council to determine how to proceed, but that's generally how we proceed with the minutes.
It's got to be without note or comment, including what's proposed by the motion?
The motion is there. It stands on its own. We generally, if there is a larger discussion such as there was this one, we generally capture a very broad overview of the information.
I'm not sure that I'm understanding your recommendation with respect to the motion that's before us.
Sorry, I'm not recommending anything, Mr. Warden. I'm just providing some information that, that normally our minutes are without note or comment. There is just a general, with items such as this, there's a general piece of information put in there.
Okay, so I think we'll take your comments in, into consideration in, in the vote that's to come. I see several speakers, so we'll start with Deputy Board McQueen on the motion that's before us.
Sorry, I guess I was leaving it up to the second or for that. Sorry about that. I will maybe speak later on, but I don't have any comments at this point.
Okay, Counselor Milton, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And certainly the clerk's explanation of without note or comment has always been my understanding. Any verbiage that is added is at the discretion of, of the note taker. But the motion and the vote results are there for everyone to see and any background, any further background information is in, generally in the agenda information. So I'm quite satisfied with the way, the way the minutes are and they reflect the motions and the results of the motions accurately, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Soever, you're next.
Yes, and I fully understand the position that it's without note and comment, but in this case, it is very germane because the whole purpose of the meeting was to confirm the $400,000 number. And the, the consultant did acknowledge that was what he was there to do. And, and so that, that is not a comment or, or note. In the minutes right now, it says, Mr. Rodriguez spoke about the scope of the project and associated costs. But, you know, okay, so that's fine. But what did he tell us about the costs? I mean, that's what we were all attending a special meeting to hear from him. Um, what was he gonna tell us about the cost? Were they solid that we could rely upon them to make our decision? So I think that's very germane. That's not a note or comment. That is the, that is the whole point of the discussion. And so that's very substantive. And to exclude that number so that there is no written record is that is what the basis of our decision was. You know, I don't think that's note or comment. That's fundamental to the whole discussion.
Okay, thank you, Madam C L.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would only note for, for councils referenced similar to the comment that Counselor Milne provided that the presentation made by Colliers is included in the agenda package. And that presentation clearly states the numbers that Andrew was advising us on and his remarks are referred to in the minutes. So I think we have to look at the information provided to council in its entirety.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, then I will call the question on the motion and Madam Clerk, just to be clear, the motion is?
At the minutes of the committee, a whole meeting dated August 26, 2021 be amended to reflect that the estimated cost of $400,000 per bed was confirmed to allow council to make an informed decision.
Excellent. So you're either voting in favor of that motion or not.
Mr. Warden, I'd like a recorded vote.
I think we have a speaker just before that, but I will do that. Deputy Ward McQueen.
Just a point, thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm going back to the minutes of August 12th, Committee of the Whole. And it does speak in there, but stop, be requested to have Colliers provide an overview of the performa cost for long-term care facilities and request evaluation for the existing 66-bed unit for a gable. So I, I think there is, there was direction through those minutes that we wanted to know about cost. And, you know, I, I understand the Madam Clerk with regards without note and comment, but I think as, as speaking along with what Mistress Soever is talking about, the special meeting was specifically to talk about that cost. And if you look at those minutes of, of August 12th, Committee of the Whole, it does sort of, it's ramping up to having that further discussion, which the warden called the special meeting and we did talk about costs. So I just, I think there was some direction in those minutes and, and pouring up talking about. So it's more specific of that meeting of the cost. So I certainly support Mistress Soever in the sense of noting the part of, of the 400,000. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. I think, oh. Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Warden. Next. The, the only question I have is, would we be setting a sort of a precedence if we, if we vote in favor of this? Because I went back to, to the presentation made by, made by Colliers, Mr. Rodriguez. It's on the second, it's the first line on the second slide, that the cost is $370,000 to $400,000 plus thousand dollars. So, I, I, I find that I agree with Counselor Milne that for further information, there is the agenda package, which on the county website, you have the agenda package followed by the minutes. You have the agenda package for it. So, I worry about the kind of precedence we might be setting.
Okay, I'm wanting to call the question. So I guess Counselor Soever, you'll be the last speaker.
Yes, and I, I would just say that the minutes are the official record of the meeting and, and the other materials are in celerity to that than, you know, although the video and all the other materials, but the official record of the meeting is still the minutes.
Thank you. So I think we're now ready to call the question on the motion to amend the special meeting Committee of the Whole Minutes dated August 26, 2021. All those, well, I'll turn it over to Madam Clerk since it's recorded.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So you're voting in favor. If you're voting for the amendment, you're voting opposed. If you are not in favor of the amendment. Counselor Mackey.
In favor.
Counselor Gamble.
In favor.
Counselor Burley.
Opposed.
Counselor Carlton.
Opposed.
Counselor McQueen.
In favor.
Counselor Desai.
Opposed.
Counselor Patterson.
Opposed.
Warden Hicks.
Opposed.
Counselor Columbus.
Opposed.
Counselor Kivany.
Opposed.
Counselor Body.
Opposed.
Counselor O'Leary.
Opposed.
Counselor Woodbury.
Opposed.
Counselor Millen.
Opposed.
Counselor Soever.
In favor.
Counselor Potter.
In favor.
Counselor Robinson.
In favor.
And Counselor Hutchinson.
In favor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've lost my formula on my, my spreadsheet here. My apologies.
I'm gonna go out on a limb and guess 50 to 40.
No.
It's not.
It's not. The motion is lost 34 to 56.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to item number seven, which is.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Warden. We actually haven't adopted the minutes of the special meeting.
That's right.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Warden, if I might, I think it was only Counselor Kivany that switched her vote. So does she have six votes?
Counselor Kivany has five. So my, my apologies if my quick math is not correct.
That would be 55, 35, I believe.
You are correct, sir. I'm sorry, 35 to 55. My apologies.
Okay, so we are now going to turn back to five D approval of the minutes. The Committee of the Whole dated August 26th called the question. Anyone opposed to that? Oh. Are you indicating opposed or? Deputy Board McQueen?
Yeah, so if I can speak to the motion before we, we vote on it, please. So that's okay.
I thought we had talked, spoke to the motion, but perhaps not. Okay, go right ahead.
Yeah, we, we, I think this is clarity. Counselors whoever brought amendment to the motion, but now we're on the, that loss, so now we're just speaking to the, the minutes itself. So, and, and they need support to ratify the decision of that meeting. So I guess the point that I like to raise, Mr. Warden, County Council is, is the point I raised in the minutes of the Committee of the Whole, August 5th, of getting the report back on, from S H S with regards to phase two of Gray Gables, I would say probably there will be information that will come back that sort of completes that overall picture of, of the economics and of, of the current Gray Gables and how that works. I know we did have that already for Rockwood and I was just wondering if there was consideration of, of deference minutes until that report is to come because I think it's really prudent information to have before this final decision is made and I'll leave it out there for discussion at this point, Mr. Warden.
Okay, well, that's a suggestion. It's not a motion. So I'll, I'll just move on to Counselor Soever.
This, um, I, I was gonna say the same thing, but the, yeah, because it'll be interesting to see, I gather, I'm not sure exactly what's going to be included in this S H S report, but from what I understand, it's to look at the, the whole project as a campus of care, which would then probably, you know, expect, expand upon what we were requesting anyway, which was what is the existing building worth in, in the scope of that larger project? And does it, does it add any revenue which might reduce the tax hit? Obviously, if the campus of care project is a positive, net positive in terms of the overall economics of the project, I mean, that's what has been demonstrated by private industry and also by our neighbors in Simcoe, who have a very successful campus of care in Penitanglishi. You know, so hopefully there'll be some economics in that report that will further shed light on the overall economics of the Gray Gables expansion and I look forward to seeing that report.
Thank you, Madam C L.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The members of the redevelopment task force would recall the earlier discussion that we had with S H S and Salter Pylon regarding of the, the final report for Gray Gables, which was focused on looking at the, that facility as its potential with, to either provide rehabilitation space associated with the new hospital or assisted living. Either way, the, depending on what the report, which direction they come back with or they come back with numbers on both, I think it's just important for council to, to, to note that there will be some extensive renovation required likely to the existing Gray Gables facility, which would also need to be factored into any calculations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No further hands. So perhaps it's time to call the, oh, Counselor, Deputy Board McQueen.
You're pretty, you're pretty quick, Mr. Warden. I, I put my hand down so it didn't look like I was leaving it up there too long, but just to follow up with that to you and County Council, I think that's the, the, the important part is, is getting that information. Also, the public input on that. That's, that's part of what it reads is, is to get that broader base of the input. And so, Mr. Warden, I'd like to move a motion to defer the approval of these minutes until that report is presented to the committee, which then will have a broader base for County Council to see that report. I think it's prudent that we get the whole picture. County Council gets the whole picture because it's sort of like possibly buying a new vehicle and you don't know what you're going to get for a trade-in. Well, a lot of times as we upgrade our vehicles, we want to know what the trade-in value is because that helps determine your, well, your decision on, on purchasing that vehicle. So I, I just use that as a small analogy, but I just think that it's important that we get that information before we make this final decision. So I'd like to move that motion, Mr. Warden. I'm defer until the S H S report comes back.
Okay, I'm looking for a second or. Counselor Desai, your second. Okay. Do I have a second? Oh, I see Counselor Potter. Thank you. All right. So it's probably before us. Any discussion or debate on this motion to defer? Counselor Desai.
The word next. The one question that I do have is, it just goes ahead today. Then the question to put a pause on, on, on the Gray Gables project is ratified. My question is, depending on, on what the S H S report says, would we be able to come back and say, well, you know, this report is, provides evidence that it's feasible to move forward on the Gray Gables project. So therefore we should direct staff to go forward. Would that, would that be a motion that could come at that point?
Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, Counselor Desai, it didn't.
I, I think I can take it, Heather, and I think the answer would be yes.
Thank you, Warden. Next.
Okay, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden. Good morning, County Council. I think my question was similar to Counselor Desai's. I'm just wondering what information triggers, you know, the decision of County Council has been to put Gray Gables on hold, just wondering what decisions or what information would trigger that to come back to County Council. You know, specifically. Thank you.
I would assume might it be a recommendation coming from the redevelopment committee or a motion, notice of motion brought by a counselor? But if anyone else wants to add to that answer, feel free. Okay, Counselor Soever.
Yes, I'm just wondering, would that then not be considered a reconsideration?
Yes. Yes, it would be.
Okay, am I ready to call the question on the motion to defer? And is there anyone opposed?
Mr. Warden, I'd like recorded vote.
All right, turn it over to Madam Clerk.
Okay, on the motion to defer the August 26th meetings, minutes, sorry, Counselor Mackey.
In favor of deferring?
Counselor Gamble.
In favor of defer.
Counselor Burley.
Opposed.
Counselor Carlton.
Opposed.
Counselor McQueen.
Favor.
Counselor Desai.
Opposed.
Counselor Patterson.
Opposed.
Warden Hicks.
Nay.
Counselor Columbus.
Opposed.
Counselor Kivany.
In favor.
Counselor Body.
Opposed.
Counselor O'Leary.
Opposed.
I'm sorry, sir.
Opposed.
Thank you. Counselor Woodbury.
Opposed.
Counselor Millen.
Opposed.
Counselor Soever.
In favor.
Counselor Potter.
In favor.
Counselor Robinson.
In favor.
Counselor Hutchinson.
In favor.
Motion is lost 40 to 50.
Okay, we are back on the main.
Mr. Warden, can I have a point of clarity, please?
Sure, go ahead.
So the point of clarity I was just seeking is if it comes back for a reconsideration, what's the procedure in doing that to come back for a reconsideration?
If I may, Mr. Warden, let me just find my reconsideration page. Motion to, so it's section 2112 of the procedural bylaw, motion to reconsider a resolution entered upon the minutes will only be received or put within one year of the decision of council if the notice of intention to introduce such a motion to reconsider is given in writing at the previous meeting of council. The request, request, excuse me, includes reasons for the request for reconsideration. The request for reconsideration is agreed upon by majority support and only a member who voted on the prevailing side of the original motion may request reconsideration of a vote.
Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to call the question on the main motion, which is approval of the minutes dated August 26th. Is there anyone opposed? minutes dated August twenty-sixth. Is there anyone opposed? And seeing none, I'm gonna say that that is carried. Okay, item six, I do not believe we have any closed meeting matters. Item seven is the Board of Health minutes dated July twenty-third and the Board of Health Executive meeting minutes, which was stated August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, that is moved by councillor Patterson and seconded by councillor O'Leary. Councillor Patterson.
Thank you, Warden Hicks, and good morning, County Council. I have one item to share. Two Ontario seniors dental projects that were approved in the health unit's twenty-twenty budget are underway. Due to the size and scope of the project's approval to carry forward the funding to twenty-twenty-one was granted. So contracts have been awarded and renovations are underway for a clinic in Owen Sound and Markdale. This program is aimed to help low-income seniors access dental care. Eligible seniors must be sixty-five years or older and enrolled in the Ontario seniors dental care program.
We have a bit of feedback from someone.
Going to the car wash.
I think I know who the culprit was.
So to qualify, income for a single senior is twenty-two thousand two hundred or less, and for a couple, the combined income is thirty-seven thousand one hundred or less. And seniors must be enrolled in the program, so if you know of anyone that may need dental care, please have them call the health unit to be enrolled. And once these clinics are up and running, there will be communications issued. So that's a good, good news for our seniors and dental care. Thanks, Warden Hicks and County Council.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Dr. Era is with us, and so I'll turn the floor to him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My, my update has two components. The first one is on COVID, the other one is related to corporate, and I will start with the second one just because it's brief. We received the announcement from the ministry about the twenty-twenty-two funding for mitigation funding for the formula of public health funding by the county and the ministry. And, and the confirmation is that in the twenty-twenty-two, the funding is gonna be in place, so that is good news. And the first item is related to the COVID situation. We've seen the numbers increasing provincially over the past few weeks. Locally, we have maintained an average of less than five, with a few days with zero new cases, which is quite manageable. The vaccine level in, coverage in the population in Greberus is a bit over eighty-two percent first dose, seventy-seven and second, two doses, and that is a slow progress comparing to the target of ninety percent. However, it is, it seems to be cross-the-board in the province, and the recent work on policy and advocacy and the announcement of vaccine passports seems to start having effect over the past week, we've seen increase in, in the number of people attending our clinics. On, on the front of access to, to the vaccine, we continue to have pop-up clinics across Greberus in September, and we have pop-up clinics or school-based clinics in every school in Greberus that is planned in September as well. And, and that will be for the first dose and second dose as well, that might extend in October. The work on promotion of the vaccine advocacy and policy is across multiple sectors to support in developing policies requiring vaccine according to the provincial direction. And with these policies comes the requirement of testing for people who don't, who choose not to receive the vaccine, and antigen testing targeted for this narrow group, the people who have not, or the employees who have not got the vaccine, is another task, and we're working with the different partners, including the Chamber of Commerce and, and the municipalities to, to ensure the, the information is available and the testing is available. Vaccine certificates, providing the public information, how to get the certificates and work with different partners also is another task. And, and in general, Mr. Chair and Council, I see the preparedness for the fourth wave on multiple scenarios, and, and there is uncertainty which scenario is gonna develop. There is always that scenario of a new variant of concern, and, and that is, that is a slight chance, especially that we know that the variants so far have had the same response to vaccine, which is reassuring. There is uncertainty about the waning immunity. The evidence from the states shows it's around eight months, and if that's the case, and that's the direction in Ontario, we will, we are preparing to, to have a third dose across the board for, for the eligible population, and that preparedness will, will take place over the coming few weeks as well. And the, the file layer of uncertainty is the fatigue from the public and how much the public can comply and, and accept restrictions, whether it's the mask or moving to stages if, if we need to. And the fatigue in the staff, the healthcare system and public health, and all these things add another layer of uncertainty. Nevertheless, we're preparing, we're hoping for the best, but preparing for, for all these scenarios. I'll stop there, Mr. Chair. Open to questions as always.
Thank you very much, Dr. Era. There is a question from councillor Millen.
Mr. Warden, good morning, Dr. Era. My question resolves or revolves around the issue of fully vaccinated people contracting the virus. And, you know, I've had a number of people quiz me about what, what is the outcome from these people that are getting the virus that are fully vaccinated? Is it very mild? Is, is, is it similar to people that are unvaccinated? And why are the people getting the virus if they're fully vaccinated? Because we've been told for quite a while that you're, you're safe in, in brackets. So I wonder if you might comment on that, please?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's a core question, and, and the evidence is overwhelming that the outcome, if a person is infected, is milder than without vaccine. And, and the evidence is very clear that there is a protection with the vaccine, and there is no vaccine that is hundred percent. We know this from, from science, from different vaccines, and in this case, the clinical trials show that ninety-five percent of people will, will be protected from severe disease, and there is significant reduction in transmission. With the Delta variant, this number goes down to around eighty-eight. Nevertheless, that's an excellent number. And it's worth noting that with the numbers we have right now, the, the majority of, of people who are infected are people without vaccine, who have not received the vaccine. If we go to hospitalization, the data is clear from the states, from Canada. Ninety-nine point five of people enter the hospital for COVID are people who have not received the vaccine. And so that is very, very reassuring statistic. And it, it is worth noting another layer to, to this question, although it's not part of the question, but it's important there. The higher we go up in the coverage in the public of the vaccine, the more yield of people who had the vaccine who will be infected. And you can go to the extreme example of, if you have hundred percent of the public vaccinated, we're gonna find a number of people, five percent, who are vaccinated, who receive the vaccine, who, who get the disease, and we're gonna find zero percent people who are not vaccinated who get the disease, because everybody's already vaccinated. Of course, this is theoretical example, but it shows that the fact that there are people getting the infection after the vaccine does not really speak to the fact that the vaccine is not effective. It's actually effective for ninety-five percent of the public.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councillor Mackey, you next?
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Dr. Era, for being with us today. My question last night on CBC News, there was a couple of doctors speaking about medical exemptions and basically saying that, you know, the one was a family GP who is receiving lots of requests for medical exemptions. He has not given any yet, and the other doctor that was on really couldn't give any or couldn't in his mind see where there would be any medical exemptions, with the exception, I think, of someone that had a, a severe reaction to the first dose. That, that might cause the, a medical exemption. Can you just speak to your opinions on medical exemptions, please?
Through you, Mr. Chair. What you said is precisely correct. The list of exemptions from N A C is very narrow. It's related to severe reaction to the first dose or severe reaction, allergic reaction to, to a component of the vaccine that's known before. And, and in both cases, there are clinics that can provide the dose and incremental, it provide the vaccine in incremental doses to, to get rid of the allergy and provide the immunity. And the recommendation from O M A, Ontario Medical Association, is to, to all physicians to be very prudent in following that list. It, it is worth noting on this question that in a discussion with the Vaccine Task Force for Greberus yesterday, we identified that number of people who might have provided or mentioned to their employer that they have medical exemption might, might not really fall into that category that's eligible for, for exemption. And a third-party assessment of, of the exemption is available for the employer, and, and we are sending a communication from the health unit to the employees and the public about the subject as well, just to provide more information.
Thank you. Anything further, councillor Mackey?
No, that, that's great. I appreciate that. I, I think it's important that we do communicate. It appears like people may be trying to access medical exemption as a way of avoiding vaccination, so it was good to hear that there's really very limited reasons for that. Just a follow-up question, Dr. Era, and it's in regards to the, so the anti, or the antigen testing. As far as frequency, what would your recommendation be for employers as far as the frequency of that antigen testing for employees that may not want to be vaccinated?
Through you, Mr. Chair. At this point, with the epidemiology at hand, I would recommend twice per week.
Good. Thank you. Next is councillor Gamble.
Yes, thank you, Warden, and thank you, Dr. Era. Just to change the direction here, I read at interest this morning of a new virus out of India that seems to be very alarming. I, I can't remember the name of it, but it does appear to be a brain disease. It's very contagious. Do you know anything about that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not, I'm not aware of, of that. I, I don't have information about it. I can look specifically into it, especially if you can give me a bit more information about it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Next, councillor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Council and Dr. Era. Dr. Era, I'm wondering if you have any information or updates with regards to children under twelve and the potential for them to be eventually vaccinated?
Through you, Mr. Chair. To the best of my knowledge and communication, that's not final from the ministry, we were expecting approval of these vaccines later this year, anywhere, anywhere between November and December.
You good, councillor Keveney?
That's good news. Thank you, Dr. Era.
Thank you. Next, councillor Soever.
Yes, and I'm just following up, but you know, it's, it's, it's obvious that, you know, as more and more people get vaccinated, you know, there will be with the number of cases that happen, and then will go up because there's just more of them. But is there anywhere where you know where a person can actually see the odds of getting hospitalized for vax, comparing vaccinated and unvaccinated? Because so often we see the numbers that there's, you know, X number of cases in, in fully vaccinated people, but, and then there's so many in, you know, unvaccinated, but obviously, as those ratios change, and as the number of fully vaccinated goes up, you would expect the ratio to start to tip in favor of more cases in the fully vaccinated, just cuz almost everybody is, as you pointed out. So is there anywhere where you can actually see the odds of infection or hospitalization in the two populations?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Public Health Ontario website has plenty of that information. Locally, our data is, is very small, and as a sample size, the number of hospitalizations, number of even cases, so inference is not warranted. A sample size is, is essential to, to make any conclusions about data. But Public Health Ontario would, would have that data. I'll be more than happy to provide it directly if you wish.
Yeah, thank you.
You good, councillor Soever?
Yes.
Councillor Potter, you're next.
Thank you, and just a little information, and I know the councillor decides to put it on the chat, but I think the virus that councillor Gamble was referring to is known as the NIPAH virus, and there are a lot of fears that it's, it might be stronger than, than COVID, so just that little bit of information.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll definitely look into this virus. We, we have in Canada, just to reassure the group, a robust surveillance system that's connected with World Health Organization and Public Health Ontario as well, not just the Public Health Agency of Canada, monitor these diseases, and we get signals of them. For example, for COVID, you know, it, earlier reports were late December, but it wasn't as significant as it was at the time predicted. Nevertheless, when we receive these signals locally, I would definitely look at it, explore it, explore it with academic colleagues, I would explore it with M O Hs across the province. So I have not received anything about this virus. Nevertheless, since it was brought up at this meeting, I will do diligence and explore it.
Thank you very much. I see no further hands, so with that said, I'll thank you, Dr. Era, for attending today. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Message as always. All right, turning on to our agenda again, we are back. So we have to move, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Have to vote, yes. My, my apologies. So I call the question now on the motion to approve those minutes. Is there anyone opposed? And seeing no hands, I'll say that that is carried. Thank you very much. We're on to item number eight. And I would just say I'd like to push forward as much as quickly as we can, because we do have a delegation that was scheduled for ten A M. But with that said, we're on to item number eight, good news and celebrations. Councillor, so ever.
Yes, so a couple of things. Our Legion is getting back up and running. They're, they're hosting events out in their parking lot, and on the twenty-first of October, they, I mean, sorry, August, they hosted an appreciation barbecue for our first responders, which I was happy to attend along with a couple of our councillors, and as well as our Member of Parliament, Terry Dowdell. So that was a great event, and, and I'm happy to say that two Gray County paramedics did drop by for a burger at lunch, and very much appreciate all the hard work they put in, and that was a great event for, hosted by the Legion. The next event at the Legion is September twenty-fifth, which is our Oktoberfest. Obviously, due to COVID restrictions, it's somewhat smaller than other years, but tickets are available at the Oktoberfest dot blue website. Also, yesterday, I was able to, we, along with Mayor McQueen of Gray Highlands and Mayor Measures of Clearview, on behalf of the South Georgian Bay Mayor's Caucus, we hosted B J Thangasalam, the Parliamentary Assistant to the Ministry of Transport, as well as senior staff from the ministry, and we had a great day touring around the region of South Georgian Bay, looking at traffic issues here. So the minister unfortunately was unable to attend due to other commitments, but it was a great visit, and it did, we did also highlight the traffic issues of, of the entire region, including some of the six and ten corridor, cuz you know, obviously, we're at the end of the transportation chain emanating out of the GTA, and we were happy to be able to bring some of the traffic issues to senior ministry staff and the Parliamentary Assistance Attention.
Thank you, councillor Soever. I was interested to read that we have a post for prospective comments around Google Maps. Perhaps inadvertently directing traffic and creating some. Perhaps inadvertently directing traffic and creating some, some issues for roads that were not designed for that level of traffic. Um, councillor beside, you are next.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Gray Highlands has received us, its most newest citizen, if you will, Stephanie Stewart and, and her husband Nathan Stewart welcomed a baby boy into the world last night. So, heartily congratulations to them. And yeah, welcome, welcome to the world theater. And the other thing that I wanted to mention, following the August twenty-sixth Committee of the Hall, there was some comments which I, which I, I won't repeat here. But they were certainly a little offensive in nature, and I just wanted to mention I'm overwhelmed by the outpour of support from members of the community. I really appreciated that and a heartfelt thank you for that. So thank you. Thank you very much for doing those work.
Thank you, councillor beside, councillor Columbus, and then I'll turn to you, councillor Burley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. I just wanted to let everyone know that we had a very successful opening of our brand-new Georgian Bay Community School on Tuesday, of course, as with the school returning with a well over a thousand students registered and including a surge of new enrollments, of course, the last week just before classes started. And that was, we took that as certainly a testament to the growth in our municipality, because our building permits have now exceeded eighty-two and a half million dollars as a new record for us in terms of building permits for year-to-date. Happy to see the signs of recovery coming. Small amounts over the Labor Day weekend has always been a very exciting weekend in our municipality with MIF and the scarecrow invasion, of course, happening. There is a mini scarecrow invasion display at the Big Apple this year to give us an advance warning of their twenty-fifth anniversary coming up next year. New businesses are coming in and we celebrated over the long weekend with the Canada Day fireworks, which was very, very popular and widely supported. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Councillor Columbus, I wonder if you might like to highlight one of the eight, two point five million in builds? Is there one or two projects that you want to mention?
Well, certainly, certainly our attainable housing and is included in that number. There are a number of projects on the, on the way, but we are waiting anxiously for it. This includes, of course, well, with our long-term care facility that contributed to it as well. Well underway, that, that vehicle is a long-term care facility on Cook Street. And other projects are moving along very quickly. Very exciting times.
Indeed. Next is councillor Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd be happy myself, council and all the repairs of George and Bus. We sincerely like to thank the county for making to, adding to the beauty of George and Bus for the newly paved county roads for our municipality. And we really look forward to the new paved roads in two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you for that. Councillor Hutchison, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Council. Just a couple of highlights. I just want to say the soggy municipal airport has a new ground station network. This provides our pilots in our coverage area with weather and safety. So we are the only airport in our area that is equipped with this technology. And it was all taken care of by the airport, various fundraisers that take place. And I also want to say we are pleased to welcome the Landing Gear Diner to the airport, which will be opened up later in September. So things are moving forward. Thank you.
Councillor Hutchison, that ground station network, is that providing services to only pilots or can
It's actually a BNA that you would put on your phone or a piece of equipment you put in the, in your aircraft. And it's, it's not a very expensive item to maintain. And again, it is more for the, the pilots at, at this, at this stage of it.
Thank you, sir. Deputy Warden McQueen, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and, and County Council. And just to, a couple of things, just to follow up with councillors whoever with regards to our meeting with the Ministry of Transportation yesterday. Was a very good meeting and just to iterate his comments that one of the biggest parts that I raised and when I was Warden raised as well, I was trying to get the minister here and because of COVID it was delayed. But the two regions, central region and southwestern region, most definitely need to talk to each other. And, I mean, we had that meeting back in March of, of two thousand and twenty, just before we went into shutdown. But that was the bigger part is, you know, you just can't be siloed to each region because of the southern Georgian Bay region and itself is so integrated between Semple and Gray Counties that and the growth that's happening there right from Musaga Beach right around to Leeford is, is sort of an entity in itself. So that was something that was communicated along with the traffic patterns. And we, we did have a drive up County Road ninety-one and talked about that as well. The other part I want to raise, Mr. Warden, is we are planning to have Ram Rodeo come to Gray Highlands on the twenty-fifth, twenty-six, which is in a few weeks, and it's a, excuse me, it's a fundraiser, not only for the opportunity for families to attend an event. Certainly, it's an outdoor event, so certainly we'll be following all the COVID restrictions and, and all the protocols around that. But certainly, it's an opportunity for an event that people have been longing for and, and just want to get out and, and do something. But also, it's a fundraiser for the foundation for the Markdale Hospital, as you're probably aware. Not only when you build a hospital, you got to put beds and, and all that hardware inside. So the foundation is working hard to, to follow up on, on that fundraising of and they're going to have a kickoff here later on this fall from, from the fundraising. But this is sort of a, a pre-kickoff in the sense of fundraising for that. So if you wish to attend, you can buy tickets online or you can attend both days, both Saturday and Sunday, and we're hoping for great weather, but certainly rain and shine, the rodeo will go forward, unless it's lightning and they take a pause. So who knows? But hopefully, it's going to be a successful event and it's a good cause to raise funds for the local Markdale Foundation. So thanks again, Mr. Warden and County Council.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. And more information and tickets available where?
So you can go to, so you could go to the Ram Rodeo. It's, it's around, it's the Ram Rodeo across Ontario. So you can look up Ram Rodeo. There's also a Gray Highlands site that's also, and, and tickets are, you can buy tickets in advance. There's a little bit of a savings by buying them in advance. They just had the first one. And just to iterate that they've been shut down since two thousand and nineteen themselves. So they had the first Ram Rodeo here in Ontario in Orangeville two weeks ago. So yeah, just look up Ram Rodeo and it'll, it'll direct you, and it'll have a, a list of all the different rodeos that are happening this fall, and it'll, it'll show Osprey or Gray Highlands. And you can click on there and certainly purchase your tickets. And ticket sales are fantastic right now. It's amazing. And just in the sense of the first Ram Rodeo that was in Orangeville, they sold out on the Saturday and which is over two thousand, I think, on the Sunday, they were on seventeen hundred. So great response, great, and we're having great response from the sponsorship, because it's the sponsorship that's bringing the rodeo to Gray Highlands. And so I will say that this time I've, I'm, have been able to secure enough sponsorship to cover the rodeo. And so basically, all the gate receipts are all profits will go toward the foundation. So it's a, it's a win-win. And so, yeah, come out and support it. It'd be great. And let's hope for great weather. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that's it for good news and celebrations. With that said, we'll turn to item nine, which is the motion for adjournment, which is moved by councillor O'Leary and seconded by councillor Woodbury. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is Carrie. Thank you very much. We will